Hello. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for April 11, 2008. Please rise for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Michael Solano has an obligation, regrets not being able to attend, and Chris DiLorenzo is under the weather. I want to say a few words here if I might, because I've been pondering something this last week. I've been thinking about it a lot, and I've written down these words, so I am clear. During the public comment section last week, Mrs. Lopez has addressed the board with concerns, and my exchange with her was not productive, to say the least. In my attempt to keep to the procedures spelled out on the sign-up sheet for public comment, I overreacted. I don't react well in confrontational situations, and I shouldn't have done so then. Everyone should know that this board and administration totally welcomes input, and we try to respond in public meetings as our policies and procedures dictate. Please know that we, as a board and administration, try to always act in the best interest of each and every student. So in spite of any confrontation I had with Mrs. Lopez, even I am here because I want what's best for the academic achievement, growth, and welfare of our students. Going forward, I am hopeful that I, the board, the administration, and Mrs. Lopez can create a cooperative spirit that will advance communication and more positively address her concerns. Mrs. Rodriguez will be addressing some of those in the agenda section regarding comments previously raised. And in the spirit of that statement, here's the mission statement for the district. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve an acting district clerk?
Motion.
Second. Move in seconded. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. Move in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Questions and comments from interested citizens? Paulette Brown.
We're gonna have a problem. Doesn't go up any higher?
No.
Okay. I'll step over the table.
It'll hear you.
Will hear you.
I'm Paulette Brown, and I was on the board for two terms, from 1993 to 1999. My daughter was harassed, a 1995 graduate, by a teacher because she was too quiet. And because of Mr. Dean Bernasconi, may he rest in peace, he called the cluster teachers, and we had a meeting with all the cluster teachers and me, and those three other cluster teachers socked it to the bullying teacher. It was handled beautifully. Doesn't sound like it was handled so beautifully, and the bullying teacher walked out of the meeting fuming. I'm very sad when I look at these videos for school board meetings, because I really feel that things have deteriorated over the years. I have two graduates, and I have two grandchildren. I would say class of 2019 and 2020, no, excuse me, 39 and maybe 41. A long time coming. Okay, one is starting kindergarten in September, the other is not yet. I have to say that regardless of what you said, John, I was appalled when I watched the video from the last meeting. I don't know Mrs. Lopez from Adam, but Facebook is all over the place. I doubt you'll win another seat on the board. People are so angry. Mrs. Lopez was calm, cool, and collected the entire time she tried to speak to you, and you blew up. You were arrogant, you were threatening, you totally crossed the line. I happen to be, and what really upset me even more was your fellow board members sat there, and not one of them opened their mouth. You went confrontational, now I'm being confrontational. I happened to be at Pine Tree Elementary School for a fundraiser on Saturday, and I was so pleased to see all the gigantic signs around the gym about bullying. If someone is sitting alone, please go over and do them. If you see bullying, please report it to a teacher. If you see this, if this happens, report it, report it, report it. John Hubert, you need to go to the elementary school and read what's posted in the gym. You may learn something.
Thank you, Paulette.
You're welcome.
Lorraine?
Lorraine Loaning. I'm a district resident, and I have two boys, one who graduated a while ago and one who's in the high school now. I'm a frequent attendee to this meeting. I frequently go to your website, I follow Facebook, your Facebook page, and the Twitter feed of a bunch of the district clubs, teams, organizations. And one of the things that I think you guys do fabulously is celebrate the accomplishments and achievements of our students. I was here last week, and you had the little reflections, and it was lovely, it was very nice, and I think you guys do that very well, mostly. While we do a really good job, it seems to me, with sport, art, and music, academic achievement is tending to be maybe lost. You do the Top 25, and you do the Odyssey of the Mind, and a few other things. And don't get me wrong, those things are important. I wouldn't want to live in a world without music and art. And as far as sport goes, my family is very engaged in sport. My son's at a meet right now, so it's not that I don't want to diminish that, but I think academics is getting a little short shrift. Now, we had a crusade of chat a few months ago, and I was there with my family, and we discussed this. And we talked about how it would be hard to put metrics and make this measurable. You know, it's easy to say who's the fastest swimmer, or who scores the most points, but who writes the best essay, who's the chemistry student of the week, similar to how you have athlete of the week. So I understand that there's challenges with that measurability and the metrics, and I think we left it where you guys were gonna kind of noodle it over and come up with a game plan for moving forward, and I respect that. However, this last month, on March 16th and March 17th, three members of the math team made states. This was a big deal. Forty-two members from Team, they went to represent Team Dusso, Duchess, Ulster, Sullivan, and Orange. Forty-two students, the top forty-two from all the math teams in those counties, the top forty-two scores went on to Geneseo to represent Team Dusso. And it was a crazy high achievement. These kids have major accomplishments in math. And they left on a Friday morning from the high school, and they came back very late Saturday night. And I gotta tell you, I didn't really see anything about it. And my son is on that, was one of the three who were there, and, you know, it was a little disappointing, I gotta tell you. You know, we move on, but I want you to know that this was a miss. The measuring was done for you, okay? So you didn't even have to, you know, oh my God, how are we gonna measure this? It was done for you, and I think it was an opportunity lost, okay? Thank you.
Reports by Board of Education committees, do we?
There's 6.2.
Oh, the update, sorry.
I signed up.
Ms. Lopez? Do we have her sign up?
Well, she owe an apology.
Oh, okay. I didn't have that. Okay.
Martha Lopez?
Today makes 47 days since I first approached the administration about concerns for the treatment of my son, which he was receiving by one of his teachers in the high school. Not only was he humiliated in class, much like I was last week, but he was also targeted by her, by his teacher, on a daily basis. After posting the demeaning reaction of Mr. John Hubert and my pleas for help, I received so many private messages from other families suffering similar plights. They all shared their stories about their ill-fated experiences with this administration. The common theme in all these messages is that nothing is ever done. Everyone seems to turn a blind eye and dismisses the cry for help from both parents and students. How can any of these kids feel safe going to school when they are not heard and made to go back into threatening situations? Last week, I got a taste of what it must feel like for these children. The dismissive nature in which John Hubert addressed me made me feel insignificant and belittled, much like a student must feel when they are bullied. Thank you. I came and will continue to come before this board, pleading for help in resolving a serious issue. I've come extremely concerned as it seems that administrators are not following proper protocol. Last week, Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned that DASS investigations can take as long as needed and that there is no timeframe when conducting one. Those were your words. However, according to the DASS guidelines, which can be found on the state website, all investigations must be investigated promptly. The definition for promptly is done, performed, delivered, at once, and without delay. We are now on day 47. And as of today, what I know is that a Title VI investigation, which I had repeatedly asked for, still has not begun, despite repeated requests. Superintendent Rodriguez informed me that one will begin once the DASS report was completed, because two investigations cannot take place at the same time. I am a mother of a wonderful son. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to meet my son. I don't say this just because he is my son, he is a wonderful boy. He does many things within this district, which makes me very sad, okay? He donates so much, he puts in so much of his own time and energy to this community and to our schools especially. He provides girls with free prom dresses. Three, more than 300 hours a year does he donate, okay? He delivers angel dresses to hospitals for children that never make it out the hospitals. He also built buddy benches for all the elementary schools in our district. And buddy benches, ironically, are meant and designed to prevent bullying. Unfortunately, it couldn't help him. We're teaching kids not to bully, because we know what a detrimental effect it can have on these kids academically, physically, and emotionally. Thousands of dollars are being spent on the care program in the high school for the next year that breaches tolerance, equity, and respecting all voices that are heard. However, as demonstrated by last week's board meeting, this philosophy is not shared by the elected board members in this district. How can we expect parents and children to stand up for what they feel is right when people who have been voted to protect these children are now also part of the intolerance, either by belittling the speaker or by mutually standing by and watching it occur without saying a thing? It is important that the procedures and that procedure and policies such as DASSA be followed in a more effective and timely manner. We parents are entrusting our children's welfare to the school district, and we question it and advocate for our children, just as each and every board member here would if their child were in trouble, right? Wouldn't you all? I'm sure you would. We would hope to be treated with respect and receive an answer within a timely fashion. So again, I say that I am still waiting for a conclusion in an investigation that I had asked for well over a month ago, and I implore this board to respect all voices that come before them and take a closer look at the procedures being followed, so that this never happens again.
Thank you.
Can I announce?
Yes, oh, you want to speak?
I did. So last week, Mrs. Lopez, you got up and you asked two questions. Your first question was, what is the role of the board? And I wanted to share with you and the community what, the board has what we call three distinct responsibilities. And the first responsibility is to hire and evaluate the superintendent of schools. The second is to propose an annual budget for voters, and the last is to establish policies. That was your first question, and I think you had a second question, and you said, when I email, when I want to communicate, I think, who should I reach out to? And in general, if you want to speak to the board, you can either email the entire board with the exception of one person, who is our student representative. Our student representative does not get confidential data, so that really is for everyone here. If you email the board, do not include our student. She is a student of the district, and sometimes people will write confidential information, and it's not appropriate for her to have that. Not that she would, she's a great kid, she would not do anything wrong, but it's not appropriate for her to have that. So again, in the future, if you have a question or you want to email the board, you can email the entire board with the exception of one person who's a student rep. And so when you look on the website, you'll see her name, a student rep, and it's Sanjana. So I just wanted to answer those two questions.
Okay. Is there any other update on questions or comments?
No, that was it. That was the only thing from last week.
Report by Boards of Board of Education Committees?
We did not meet, we reported it last, the last meeting.
Okay.
Policy.
Do you want to talk about, who wants to talk about policy?
Policy? I'll do. We haven't had another meeting since the last, but we have completed policy number 1120, which is our sexual harassment policy. It is a combination now policy with 7551, which is student welfare, sexual harassment of students, with policy number 6121, sexual harassment of district personnel. The policy speaks to what constitutes sexual harassment, how to report complaints, corrective action plans, and additionally, there are regulations that are attached to this policy, which will outline the process for everyone. As a result of the regulations, we will update our website with the necessary forms for any student or personnel who wish to file a complaint. So that'll be updated.
Okay. Stacy, thank.
That's it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question regarding the policy?
Yes.
I don't know if Stacy's. When I was reading through it, it referred to something along the lines of public displays of affection. I wanted to know if there was anything more concrete in terms of how that's, I mean, I wasn't that popular in high school, I'd have to worry about it, but I'm sure there are students that...
Right. So we decided when we met as a board that we kept it as vague as possible, because as we've learned from previous policies, the children are gonna find a way to come up with something new next week. So if we put in there no hugging, well, then next week it's gonna be something else. So we've left that somewhat vague. There is procedure in place at both the middle school and the high school of no touching. So it pretty much encompasses all of that. If I'm not mistaken, that's pretty much how we're handling it.
Can I add something else to that? So the purpose of this policy really is to have, to be very clear about unwanted sexual advances. As someone who was a high school teacher, I do sometimes see high school students hugging each other, and it's not, that's not necessarily inappropriate, because the two are friends, you can have two girlfriends who are friends who are hugging each other. So I think this policy, when you read it, it's really about unwanted sexual advances and clear definition of what that means. It talks about pranking. I know that at one point in the middle school, when I was there, they had students who did something called pantsing. That's inappropriate. That will get you in trouble. And I see some high school students probably laughing and thinking, yeah, I may have done that when I was, but that is not appropriate and will probably get you a big consequence. And I think the piece that we also have to think about is that when you're with a group of your friends, sometimes what you think is funny may not be funny to the student who's, that's happening to, right? So you may have all thought it was a prank, and the student perceived it to be not a prank, sort of humiliating. So these are all the things that we're trying to be very clear in our policy, so that students and adults and everybody understands what the expectation, because this policy is about the adults and the students.
Any other comments? Thank you. We'll be going to that first reading of the policy a little later. Report by student representative of the Board of Education, Sanjana Shashakamora. Do you have something for us?
Yeah, not much. I mean, I only had a week, so...
What's the matter? You're doing something else?
But I do have something to say. First, I'd like to offer my congratulations to our OM teams. They did incredible states. One of them is advancing to Worlds, which is very high achievement, so congratulations to them. Congratulations to all of our Honor Society students. At the high school, there were, there's the National Honor Society, and then the Language Honor Societies, who are all inducted over the past few months. And then at our middle school, the Junior National Honor Society, those students will also be inducted next week, I believe. So congratulations to all of them that's maintaining an academic standard that is important for our district. I would also like to say that, just a reminder that this week, Friday, I believe, is Autism Awareness Day, and it's an opportunity for us, the students, to stand in solidarity with the entire community, and that includes students who do have autism. So wear blue on Friday for autism awareness. And I have two more things. I'm trying to decide what to do first, sorry. On a somewhat serious note, I want to take a second to talk about our community and what that encompasses. It's not only students and teachers, but it's also administrators, support staff, guidance counselors, youth services, custodial services, security, bus drivers, and beyond that, our parents and families. To tell you the truth, I first realized this at the Wizards game on Friday. Congratulations. No, you didn't win, but you're still incredible. Everybody had a great time, but...
Not ending up in a hospital.
I think, when I was sitting there watching this game, I realized that there was someone in attendance from every single one of these groups. There were even people in attendance who don't have children in our district anymore, or who don't have children at all. And I realized that this community isn't what we all at first see it faced value. And a lot of the community work that I focused on this year has been between students, across schools, across, within our own buildings, and the community within the school that we create with our organizations, with our clubs outside the classroom. But I want to take a moment now to influence the impact that all these other groups of people have on the students and have on, and what they have on the, and how they impact the community that we experience. Students, along with myself, have realized that there are people in our community who are holding themselves to different standards than what they expect the students to, and it's not beneficial if we are for our community to develop and grow if we don't all want to value the same things and value those same standards. And the only way that we're gonna be successful as a community, to create students who are global citizens and create a growing community where people can be active in their government, in their environment, are if we all remember to hold ourselves to those same values across all. I'm graduating soon, in June, and I really, really do hope that I, myself, don't escape this. And I remember that there are students in kindergarten who are learning the same values that I want to be learning as a senior now, and I want to learn as I graduate and for the rest of my life. And I just, I want to say that it's, I think that it's important for us to remember. And this last thing, which I think is pretty cool, I'm very excited about, is an update on something that I talked about last week, which is encouragement from the district for voter registration. A thank you to our high school administration, specifically to Mr. Flanagan, who has worked with many students, including myself. As I've said before, student activism is important, because it leads to citizen activism, which is important in all walks of life, no matter where our students end up once they graduate. And so this week, I've been in communication with Assemblyman Scoofus's office and the Board of Elections for Orange County, and they have very kindly provided me with a lot of information on why vote, on voter registration. And so next week, in collaboration with the High School Student Council and some of the AP English classes, students are gonna be heading a table outside the cafeteria at the high school, where we're gonna have Chromebooks, so that people can register to vote online, and if they're not 18, pre-register, so that by the time the elections comes around, they will be 18, they will be able to vote. And paper forms, if students would prefer to use paper phones, paper forms to register. But this kind, this way, we can have a place where they can come and register to vote, and we're focusing on making it a tradition. So not only this year, but next year, the same table will be set up the same week, and so they will remember. And if a freshman who walks by and says, oh, I can't register to vote right now, they're gonna see that same table when they're a sophomore, they're gonna see that same table when they're a junior. So by the time that they become a senior, they'll be like, I can register to vote now, I know that that's the place that I'm gonna go, my school is giving me this opportunity to register to vote, and I'm gonna take it. So I think that was really cool. Later in the week, the commissioner for the Board of Elections actually contacted me and said that they would be glad to come into some of our classrooms and speak to some of the juniors and seniors about why vote, and just to get a more personal interaction with someone who's directly involved in the process. So right now, we're working on seeing if we can bring them into our classrooms and see, and just to get that more personal encouragement. So those are some of the plans for the next weeks, and I'm very excited about them. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Can I just add that you can register to vote, even if you're 17?
Exactly.
If you turn 18 before the election. So that might open up opportunities for a number of people. You also brought up last week, I may intercede here, a few things, one of which was the fact that the campus has undergone a transformation due to the 131 interchange that's occurring, which is distressing. It's distressing to see something like this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Department of Transportation will replace the trees that they have removed on the school property.
Property.
What they do in the rites of way that are not on the school property, I'm not aware of. But there will be tree replacement, and I will make sure that happens as an old conservationist, because I agree with you. And while I'm talking to you, I want to say publicly how much I and the board appreciate the concerns and information that you have given us from the student body. They're very helpful, and we listen. And so I want to, I want to thank you. We're gonna miss you. But we still have a few months, so, in any case.
She's asleep.
Right. Thank you.
She can't stay.
Yeah, no. Do you want to take your senior year again?
No.
Maybe not. The 2018, 2019 budget review superintendent's recommendation, Mrs. Elsie Rodriguez.
Oops, let's move this here. Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, the members of my cabinet, our administrative team, department chairs, and coordinators who helped develop this year's budget. I would also like to thank our clerical staff, whose supports allow us to do the work that we do and present tonight's budget recommendation. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the work that Mr. Cahill does in helping to prepare this budget. The level of expertise he brings to the table is to be commended, so I thank Mr. Cahill. You're welcome. We begin the presentation... We begin the presentation this evening with a brief overview by Mr. Cahill. He will briefly speak about our budget calendar, our final state aid numbers, and our tax cap.
Okay, thank you, Elsie. So this is our budget calendar. We've seen this before. We're in the, I would say, the, the final phase here, the home stretch of the budget development process, and I won't bore us with a recitation of the calendar. Needless to say, we are here to make the superintendent's budget recommendation this evening. We're going to cover the state aid update, where the tax levy may be, where the budget to budget increases. Use of reserves is something that we had sent an email out about. We're going to discuss and touch on that next week. April 19th is our next meeting, where the board would adopt the budget, with or without changes. We have a week to discuss this and tweak things if need be. But I feel pretty good about this budget. I think we've tightened things down in certain areas that needed to be tightened down. I think our use of reserves is prudent. And, you know, we, we were even cited by our auditor for a particular reserve, the unemployment reserve, as being overfunded, so we're attempting to draw that down prudently and conservatively. But I feel good about this budget. In any case, we have our public budget hearing on May 2nd, which is a statutory hearing and requirement, and on May 15th, we have the annual meeting, which is the budget vote date at Central Valley Elementary School. So this slide provides an update, a state aid update. So we talked about state aid, we had the executive budget proposal, we discussed that, and we talked about sort of the negotiation that occurs. And the, the state approved a final budget on March 30th, I believe, before the April 1st start of the, the state fiscal year. The increase was just shy of $1 billion, 859 million for regular school aid. As we expected, there was a rejection of the cap on certain expense-based aids, the building aid, transportation BOSIs, which, which is great news. Sometimes these sorts of things crop up again, we're hopeful that won't happen next year. There was a rejection of the proposed shift of the cost of summer school, special education to the local districts by reducing the reimbursement rate right now for eligible expenses. We receive about 80% reimbursement, they were going to reduce that to 50%, so that would be a fairly significant cost shift from the state to the local school districts. They had estimated that would, that would cost local districts somewhere north of $100 million annually. So fortunately, that was rejected. One interesting development here, the, it was the authorization for school districts to initiate charitable funds and allow residents to make a charitable donation, which would be a tax, a credit against their property taxes, and this would offset the impact of the federal tax plan that caps the state and local tax limit, deduction limit. So we'll see how that pans out, how that develops. There's not much guidance right now. Certainly, if, if everything aligns, and this is legal and permissible, we're not sure if the IRS will permit this, but it's the governor's attempt to, you know, help the residents of New York State with allowing, you know, their local tax to be, continue to be a deduction on the federal income tax. So certainly, if that happens, we would, we would do that, we would start a charitable fund. In terms of the change in state aid, from the governor's executive proposal to the final agreement, we're seeing just shy of $400,000, about $386,000 over and above the, the governor's proposal. So every little bit helps. We were hoping that it would have been a little bit more. In terms of the budget to budget change, the increase is about $1 million, or just shy of 2% budget to budget increase. The one thing you may note here is there's been a little variability in some of the expense-based aids, and I've mentioned this in the past, that those are really estimates, so that they're based on both what we think we may spend in terms of transportation, and in the case of state BOSIs, what BOSIs is projecting we may spend. So I think we need, in the future, to drill down a little bit more on those and spend a little bit more time to sort of tighten up, you know, some of our projections, which would in turn provide more accurate budget projections for state aid purposes. So any questions on that slide? That's, that's a doozy, okay. Moving on. Okay, I wanted to again touch on the, the tax cap, maximum allowable levy, which is really the bottom line, I've mentioned that. And the reason I, I put this up again, there's two very small changes from the last time we went through this, and they're, they're really not significant, I would say, they're immaterial, but I wanted to just point it out in case someone goes back and looks at the, the prior presentation. So the first very minor difference here, the prior year tax levy, it's $116,474,300, and that's what's represented here. In, in the prior presentation, I had this as $388, so 388 is the exact cap last year. So this is what our actual levy is for the current year, what we're using in the computation of the, the tax cap for this year, and what we're going to report, and we have reported to the state. Let's see, the other update on this was, you see this prior year payments in lieu of taxes pilots? In the initial presentation, this, this value was $123,000, the updated number is $157,000. So it really doesn't have much effect on the bottom line, but I did want to point it out to you. And so our maximum allowable levy is 4.37%. I think we reported out as 4.34 previously. So again, much higher than average, I would say, much higher than prior years, and that's primarily because of the tax-based growth factor up here. It's an additional 1.7% to the, to the levy, and then the allowable growth factor, the 2% is actually 2% this year. In the last two years, it's been less than 2.
So every year when we begin to develop our budget, there are two groups of stakeholders that we keep in mind throughout this process. First is our students, and the next group is our taxpayers. Our goal is to be prudent and supportive of the needs of our children. This year, educators took a greater focus on the social-emotional learning of our students, given all the tragedies schools have faced throughout the nation. We decided that we needed to include in this year's budget an additional $391,000 in securities, personnel, and systems. This is an additional 1.2 million that we have allocated in our budget for safety and security this year. This will include an SRO from the Woodbury Police Department, and we are currently still working on a halftime position with the Monroe Police. We have new software solutions that we're adding, such as anonymous alerts, the Raptor, building and camera management systems, and then we're looking at building improvements, additional security cameras. We had a company come out in December, and they shared with us that that was one of the things that they, they wanted us to look at, was adding more security cameras throughout the schools. So we will be doing that. In addition, our door access security systems, that will allow us to see who comes in and out of our buildings. And the next thing that we're going to be doing this year is we're going to go out to a company and have them come out and do what we call an assessment and feasibility of security vestibules. We currently have vestibules in some of our buildings, but not in all of them. So we'd like someone to come out and tell us what is the possibility of adding a vestibule, such as to the middle school. I know they don't have the vestibule. What that does is it gives another layer before someone can actually enter into the building, as you can see in Pine Tree. So you'll be buzzed in, and then there's another set of doors that kind of keeps the person in there. So we're looking to make sure, to see if we can possibly do that in other buildings that we currently don't have it. We're adding some new positions. We're adding a new earth science teacher. This will allow us to offer more AP science sections to our high school students. We're hiring a district-wide behaviorist, who is certified behaviorist, or a psychologist or special ed teacher. That, again, is something that we need. We currently spend about $110,000 on behaviorists, and we felt that hiring someone in district would be, be a better way of spending our dollars. The third thing that we are adding is a, a new course, a new, a health teacher, and she will be adding a new course called Generation Health. This course will focus on young adult mental health. This additional class will allow us to build a foundation for a new high school requirement in health from Monroe-Woodbury students only. In addition, our goal is to partner with a college to make this credit, to make this a credit-bearing course as well. The last thing that we have is we're going to be adding a new ENL teacher, and that, again, is going to be district-wide. The last addition is to our kindergarten classes. We currently have teaching assistants pushing into our kindergarten classes for an hour and 45 minutes. We will now increase this to three hours. This will allow us to support our kindergartners in math and ELA. The following chart shows the approved budget for this current school year and my recommended budget for the 2018, 2019 school year of $176,593,137. This is an increase from the prior year of $5 million, $5,390,929. It is a budget to budget increase of 3.15. Our tax levy this year will be 1,119,800, yeah, let me go back, it's a big number, 119,800,000. That is a tax levy increase of $3,325,700, for a tax levy increase of 2.86. And I think in the prior presentation, Mr. Cahill said that our tax levy increase could go up to, with a tax cap of 4.26.
4.37.
4.37, okay. That's the updated, thank you. We will have on our ballots today, ballots in May, two propositions. The first proposition is for the general budget, and the second proposition is for bus-vehicle purchase. We will be replacing for the price, for the cost of $1,068,000. That will include seven large buses that we purchased in 2005. Combined, those buses have over a million and a half miles that they have been traveling on. We will add one large school bus with undercarriage storage, which I think is much needed. We've heard that some of our students who have large instruments don't have a place to, to place them, and so they will be able to put them under the, undercarriage storage, and also for athletic teams. And then that also includes two Suburbans. The following chart shows historical data related to budget to budget increases. The increase have been far smaller with cuts to state aid and the advent of property tax. Our proposed increase for next year is 3.15%. The next slide represents a tax levy comparison for the last 15 years. As you can see, last year was 3.85, and this year is 2.86. Contingent budget. Under the, under the tax cap law, if the budget fails to get voter approval on two separate votes, the district would be subject to a contingency budget. We would need to cut the budget by $3,325,700. The contingency budget limits districts to the amount of the prior year tax levy with certain mandatory budget restrictions, raises for non-bargaining staff, costs associated with community use of facilities. For Monroe-Woodbury, a contingent budget would require considerable cuts to the budget, with the potential for reductions in staff, leading to programmatic and instructional changes district-wide. Thank you, and do you have any questions?
I have one question. You were talking about the security vestibule, and I would just like to know, the glass that would be used in that, that would be bulletproof glass?
Ms. Frank.
I think that would be part of our assessment.
Right.
Right? We would assess the cost, the feasibility of all that.
Because if the person is inside this vestibule, you don't want them to be able to shoot their way through, right?
Right, that's right.
Right. So I think that one of the things that we'll look at is, is to see if we can potentially have that, and what the cost would be.
Right.
And one of the things we've been doing is using the 3M film, which, which has resistance. I don't think it's fully bulletproof, but.
It just slows things down.
It slows things down, so I mean, those kinds of measures would certainly come into, you know, would be considered.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
The SRO? What will that person do exactly?
That person will be responsible for, the, the main purpose of the SRO is really to be a presence in our schools, and to build relationships with our students. I think it's important for our local police to have connections with our students, and since they live in the, they work in the community, to be able to know who our children are. So there, our goal is to have one SRO on one side of town, and a part-time SRO on the other side of town. Right now, we have agreed to the SRO from the Woodbury side. He would be working on the campus on this side, so it would include the high school, the middle school, and Central Valley. So he would be going through the buildings, meeting with kids. One of the things that we spoke about is last year, and I'm trying to remember the, the phrase that they used, but they taught our young girls how to fight. Do you remember what they called it?
The program was RAG, Awareness Defense.
Right. And so we talked about bringing in those kinds of programs and, and that person being able to teach our kids. I thought that was phenomenal. I don't know if anybody else knows about it. Did you take it?
Yes, I did.
And it's really important, because when our children leave us and go away to college, it's important for them to be able to fight back if they were in a situation where they needed to, to do that. So those are the kinds of things that they would do. One of the things that we agreed to is that we would be part of the hiring process, and we would talk about exactly what their responsibilities would be.
Are they on?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yes, they are. They are the only people who really are, who are allowed to come into our buildings with a weapon.
I have a question. You mentioned earlier that we are drawing down some of our reserve funds, which I assume means that if we didn't do that, the tax to the property owners would be higher. So this sort of mitigates a, some of the tax increases, is that correct?
That's correct. I would look at it as, there's two pieces to that. There's the appropriated reserves, and there's three reserves involved, the unemployment reserve, and we're using $50,000 from that reserve. And the reason it's 50 is we're, we're projecting a $50,000 expense in our budget. So in other words, you appropriate the reserve, it's the revenue, and you also budget for the expense, the appropriation is 50. So that's why that's 50,000. The auditors have mentioned that that probably was a little higher than we needed, and so we're going to start to draw that down as part of a, like, sort of a larger update to our reserve plan. We may do more with that reserve in terms of transferring it to other reserves, or providing, you know, a give back to the taxpayers, but that's the way I look at the, the use of the reserves. The other two pieces are the retirement reserve, which is for non-certificated employees. In other words, it's not, it's employees that we pay into the ERS, not the TRS system. So that's 150,000 from that reserve, and another 150,000 from our EBLO, Employee Benefit Acrued Liability Reserve, which is essentially payments that we make typically when, when people retire for, for time, you know, unused time, that, that kind of thing. And it's, it, it does lower the tax rate, it's brought the tax rate down below 3%. It would have been much closer to the budget increase, you know, above 3.3, 3, you know, 0.2, that kind of thing. You know, and I feel we should have reserves. Reserves are like savings accounts for rainy days, or to, to smooth things out when a year like this, state aid wasn't as high as we would have hoped or liked. But you don't want to have too much. You know, the state controller will, will cite you if you have too much, and you do an audit. So this is, you know, helps us this year, and it's the appropriate thing to do.
And it wouldn't be prudent to have too little.
Correct.
Correct.
It's, I say it's like landing the jet. 4% is what we're allowed, you have the appropriate reserves, you can't have too little or too much.
All right. Don, did you want to say something?
Yeah, on one of the slides, you talked about the SRO and the, the new software, anonymous alerts. One of, one of the discussions today about the bullying and the DAS and things, one of the things I wanted to point out was, I, I actually sat in a meeting with this company earlier this year, it's very impressive, but relevant to the conversations we're having, I wanted to tie something together. This, this product that we're getting allows every student, if they see someone being bullied, if they witness it, and we, we've talked a lot in the, in the last few meetings about how long it takes to interview people and do these types of things. This is a package that the students will have on their smartphone, that they can say anonymously, I just saw this boy, this behavior, either by another student or by a teacher, whoever it is, of behaving this way. And, and one of the reasons for getting that is it, it speeds up these types of processes, because we'll have, we'll have a digital record that, you know, John. John Doe reported this. And they can do it anonymously so that they don't feel that they'll be persecuted. And I think relevant to this budget and I think some of the recent conversations, because it is something that is a major concern of ours, is the bullying, that, you know, this, we talked in the last meeting that by putting this in, typically we also expect...
The numbers to rise.
The numbers to rise. Because, you know, the goal of the board and the goal of the administration is to be very open and transparent and try to give the tools to the students who are witnessing these things, the ability to say, "Hey, someone picked on my friend or someone did this or someone was doing something wrong." And we expect it to rise because, you know, there's just so many administrators and parents and teachers that were trying to put those tools into the hands so that things like, that we've been discussing more recently, hopefully, if those incidents come up, we'll have more data. And the other part of it was the security cameras. Along those exact same lines is we're trying to, again, make the process of looking at bullying or any of these incidents that involve students, teachers, and everything else much easier and faster for us to investigate. And I think some of Martha's issues and the same issues that we had earlier is we put a lot of time into saying, "What are the tools?" Knowing that we're going to get, we're going to get danked in the beginning. We know that because we didn't have these tools and now we're putting them, we're spending the money to put them in the hands. And when we looked at all the ways we could spend money, what was the most cost-effective way for taxpayers and what was the most effective way? And I think that product is in 5,000 schools. We went through extensive reviews about, you know, you can, you can become, you know, the big brother, monitor everything. And what I think we saw from evidence is that other students care about each other and they will report something when they feel that someone is, you know, doing something inappropriate or not behaving, you know, the right way. And I think, I just wanted to point that out because I know it's a current issue and it's something we've spent a great deal of time looking at. This wasn't, it didn't come about overnight. We also, I think, planned the staff slightly differently because we expect this will bring up issues. And I think some of the issues that we're discussing here will probably get a little worse because we're going to be more aware. We don't want to give that impression that we think everything's perfect.
Right.
We want to give that impression that we're going to spend the money to help point them out and then we're going to spend the money to address those issues. But I thought that was appropriate for the conversation.
I think Bargov wanted to speak a little bit about anonymous alerts.
So it's really, it's really one of the really best product out there we've been watching. I personally know the company for the last 15 years around. It's been about 4,000-plus school district and it's, Mr. Skolander actually took the lead on that with the high school and middle school administration team. So we are piloting this year with this two building with the intent that let all the kinks resolve through the process. And when we come back in September, this product will be really up and running for all, for at least the middle school and high school student. We do expect in the beginning that will be more false positive alarms in the beginning. After that, it should be really the product, what it's designed to do is reporting a specific behavior that could be odd. It could be student to student. It could be student to teacher. It could be student to administrator. Could be between any two folks. So this is really, really a good industry standard product and it, a lot of districts are using it and shown that the improvement in the culture of the district.
I had a follow-up question with that that I had gotten today. Is there going to be a parent component to that or is that something that can be added at some point or is it strictly within the building, student to faculty, faculty to student?
As a pilot, we have not added it, but it's actually anonymous. So as a parent, you can definitely report that. Anybody can report it. It could be a student, administrator or a parent, but not in terms of the relation to the, to the parent to parent or parent to the student.
I think what Stacy is saying though is, I'm a second grader, right? I don't feel comfortable. I don't have an app. Let's just say that. And I go home to my parent and I say, you know, "This happens in school. Can the parent then..."
There will be a phone number actually as well.
Okay.
To do the report.
But they can do it anonymously as well, is what you're saying.
And that's on the link, that is going to be on the link on the website.
Yeah, right. I think that was the question that they were asking. It's how as a parent, when you have a child in the early grades...
So the parent doesn't feel they'll be persecuted.
Correct. Correct.
Right.
So the parents can download the app. I'm sorry.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
So I know that we're, because of these great apps that we're talking about here, we've stated that we're probably expecting an increase and perhaps it's going to take longer. But what are we doing proactively to maybe train some people so that we can raise the staff numbers to be able to answer some of these proposed increases to these complaints?
I think that, thank you for the question. I think that one of the things that we need to do and that's why I'm really happy about our strategic plan is that what we received from our surveys really are indicative of what we need to work on. And one of the things that we need to talk about is how we as a community, I think Sanjana spoke about it very eloquently, is how we as a community, that includes our teachers, make sure that we are creating environments where kids feel comfortable with. So what are we doing? We're going to be doing a lot of training with our teachers next year. Part of our staff development will be focused on the social, emotional of, learning of our students and really focus on that. We're a high-achieving school and oftentimes that becomes the most important thing. And I'm here to say that that is the, that is an important thing, but also that our students feel safe. And I know that Mrs. Lopez has been here for three times now, I think. And those things are addressed privately. On the other side, what do we do with our teachers? We give them staff development. We try, we provide them with the professional development to understand how this affects students. I'll give you an example. Probably about three months ago, we had all of our bus drivers in here because we felt that our bus drivers really are the eyes and ears of all of us and they get to see what goes on. And we do have cameras on our buses, so we do see, we also get to see what goes on. And we had a trainer come in and what he talked about was, "How do you spot the child who's having a tough time?" And they talked about the students coming in, you know, a student who's usually really happy is now have their heads down. You know, what do you do if you see that? So those things, we're trying to ensure that we're training everybody, you know. It's not just the teachers. It is, we do the training with our food service workers. We do the training with our monitors. We do the trainings with our teaching assistants. We do the trainings with, you know, everybody who comes in contact with our children because everybody is really responsible for noticing that child who's having a difficult time. I think your question was also about training, like, "How do we get more people to be trained for, like, DASSA?"
Yeah. How do we get more people to be trained?
Well, that's the problem because the regs say that we're supposed to have, we have one person assigned through every, every building, has a designated DASSA coordinator. What we have been doing is we've been taking our internal people who have done a very good job. Ada Smalls got up last, last week. And we have them sit with people and train them as well. There is no certification to be a DASSA coordinator, but it's important for us to help our teachers understand what they should be looking for. As a follow-up to last week, I had a teacher come and visit me and we spoke about what we could do. And one of the things that she shared with me is that we have to do better training of our teachers. We do, there's a requirement, so there's a videotape that they get to watch. I think we need to take more time for them to understand what DASSA is really about and what would be a sign of someone who may have been, you know, involved in a DASSA violation. But I think that the bigger piece is not just about the consequence, it's about getting everybody on the same page. And so that's something that we will be working on as well, is making sure that our teachers really understand what DASSA is about, not just a checkoff, but real training with DASSA and all of the other things that we have to do.
I want to add, Elsie, one of the things that, if you, if you look at this issue in general in the industry, to your point of training, the real goal is for it to not happen.
Right.
Right? So we have signs that say, "Don't do this." We give classes and the parents reinforce this with the children. The reason for an SRO is statistics show that by that person being there, it prevents certain acts from happening. And it's the same thing with anonymous alerts. It's the same thing with cameras. What happens with all of us, if there was a police officer at every single, you know, on every single street in the town, people wouldn't speak. They would, they would obey the law. And what you find with these programs and the challenge for us is to make sure that they're effectively implemented, which I think Bargov and his team are doing an excellent job of. The idea is that if you behave badly, you will get caught. So the whole premise behind this is to really reduce the number of DASSA filings because they don't treat other people this way because they know they're going to get caught. So what I think we're probably going to see is a surge and then an understanding of what's going on and you're going to see it, hopefully, even go up below where it is now. I mean, that's, that's the real goal. And I think the reason for spending this money is, is we're trying to affect behavior, right? So that by spending this money, hopefully, the result will be, over time, it won't be right away. It'll be worse.
And there are other programs that we have. We have Olveus, right? We have that at the elementary schools. We have Safe School Ambassadors. And I don't know if everybody's aware of what Safe School Ambassadors are, but they're students that are trained to be able to eyeball and see what's going on. And one of the things that we learned is that it is, we have 7,000 students and we have, I'm going to say, 1,000 teachers. So again, it is, it is better for our students also to be telling and noticing what's going on. So our Safe School Ambassadors who start at the middle school and then go through all the training, they also are trained to see what are some signs and symptoms of someone who may be bullied or witnessed it. And what do you do? You talk about being an upstander, a bystander, and all of that language. All of those pieces help, but there's also the accountability piece, right? If we have all of these things and there's no accountability. So that too has to be worked on. I think, I think one of the things that we, I don't want to say struggle with, but it's very difficult, is that most of us sitting here are educators. And one of the things that we're not is we were not trained investigators. And so it's, it's difficult. And we, we work on that. But, but by nature, we're educators. And it's hard to tell an educator that you're now going to be an investigator. Sometimes that's, that's hard for them because that's not what they, they're comfortable doing. They're comfortable teaching a class. So that's why it's difficult to say to teachers, "I'd like you to become a DASSA person or coordinator" because they're going to say, "I'm a classroom teacher." So it's changing the language. It's really putting it out there, making sure that everybody's aware, looking at the things where we're falling short, such as making sure that our teachers are aware what DASSA is, do a better job of training them and in the understanding of what DASSA is.
Yeah, your comment about the students policing themselves to the extent that my, I rolled my eyes a little because my daughter is a Safe School Ambassador and I hear all about it.
You're not supposed to say that she's a Safe School Ambassador in public.
I'm sorry. She's not undercover anymore.
Yeah, she's not going to be happy with you.
I just had a comment. You know, I was listening to, I want to thank all the women that got up and spoke and commend them. And I was listening to what Lorraine was talking about where, what we recognize as far as, you know, the athletes, the artists, the musicians, so on and so forth. I always wonder and think, "Where is the student that isn't involved in sports, isn't involved in drama, isn't involved in music, isn't involved in art, and just slipped somewhere? What do we have? Do we have?" I think I mentioned it a while back, like some kind of place, like a rap session, a place to go to where they can kind of connect with same. Because I know that idle time is time with the devil. God only knows what these students may be doing or maybe don't, they go home to an empty home. What's going on? Can we kind of locate who those students are? Because you also mentioned who can recognize what students are having a little bit of a hard time. Because obviously you don't have a crystal ball. You can't read people's minds. Everyone pretends everything's okay. I mean, including teachers, parents, you know, everyone is, you know, guilty of saying, "Oh, everything's fine," when it really isn't. So is there some way of tracking those students that don't get involved?
So you...
Yeah, can you answer that? I mean, we're getting a little of them. This is all important.
But it's all our programs and those are the kids that are left out.
So I think that, that we as a district have a lot of extracurricular activities. We, we give kids a lot of opportunities to do a lot of different things. And I can't think off, off the top of my head, but I know that we have a lot of curricular after-school activities, starting in the middle school. We have Girls on the Run in middle school. We have chess. We offer... Okay, I'm looking. Yes, thank you.
So John Cassie is going to be coming up here. John Cassie is going to be coming up in a minute to do our presentation, but...
He is?
When...
Oh, yes.
We have the, we have the morning, we have the morning show every day. And when I, when I watch the morning show, one of the things that they advertise is rec night.
That, I was actually going to jump in.
That's right. That's right. I saw that.
Which is actually in the afternoon, which, that does bother me a little bit when they advertise this rec.
They're just taking what the middle school used to do.
Really, it's 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. But anyway, I digress. Rec night, go ahead.
But I was going to comment, Ms. Carroll, about how they're, the student council, the different grades often host rec, rec afternoons.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Hassler would call them. But they set up a lot of games in the cafeteria and they sell food. And students who don't participate in after-school activities still come and they play games. They have the big chessboard out there. They have all the foosball tables out. They put out the ping-pong tables. They sell food. Kids sit and do their homework together. Kids sit and play these games. They bounce back, of course, from the library, also using the resources of the library, the computers, the books, the librarians themselves. And though this is not an everyday thing, I still run into kids who are so excited to go see their friends who they only get to see at rec afternoon. But I think that it would be great to have more of these opportunities for students, but that is something in the high school that is in existence.
And it's been in existence in the middle school for years, rec night for years.
Well, I don't want it to take a life of its own, but I think the question more was...
What are we doing for the average student?
Unless you're taking attendance at all these functions and you're cross-referencing with the, who placed, look for us in who's state after.
We have so much to be able to do. What are we doing?
Elsie, if I, I think that this deserves its own agenda item.
Okay.
At one point, I mean, I think that it's important. I think we should have it as an agenda item. It's not, we've wandered far away. It's important, but far away from the budget.
I understand. I will, we will add, just to be clear, we will add a section at some point in the next couple of weeks, just to talk about what the offerings are of the district. Would that be? No. We'll talk later and I'll, I'll...
Yeah. John, there is, there's this one to kind of talk about this. We also had parents stand up here at other board meetings saying, "Could we remove the honor, the listings?" Because children were sick during the year and they've always been on, they've always been recognized and now they're not. I'm not offering a solution, but I want to at least, you know, show that this isn't a simple thing of honoring. One, we've also had parents coming up saying, "Don't publish that information because it hurts my child because my child, for whatever reason, isn't on it." So I don't have, I'm just saying, it's a very complicated...
I'm just coming from a different standpoint because I did counseling in this community for eight years. So I got a lot of students from different schools that let me know what their issues were, that there wasn't, you know, they were able to disappear and do things that we read about. So that's all, that's where I'm coming from. I'm not coming from, you know, any other place, but that place of where's that student.
We will, we will, I'll get a title for it, but we will, we will...
Thank you.
I'm not sure how I will code it, but...
Let's figure out exactly how to approach this.
I will do that, sir.
Rather than have a amorphous conversation.
You got it. I understand.
Have a pointed conversation with, you know.
Right.
And one of the things, I wanted to say, thank you for addressing that unemployment line because I think I had mentioned it on a couple of occasions, that we were sitting on a cool million for quite some time.
Right.
For no reason that I could see because unemployment, it had been sitting there for about five, six years, I think.
I agree.
You agree. Thank you.
Especially with the change in government. It's, we can, the unemployment can go.
All right. We're going to move on. Thank you, Patrick.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Elsie.
Okay.
We're through with the budget. Dr. Hassler, curriculum report on the, on the high school 2017 data and Mr. Cassie and whoever else.
I know, absolutely.
I mean, it's important that you should address it. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Huber, please take some time.
Do you want to take a moment?
Yeah.
Should we, before this?
No.
No?
Are you on the clock?
No, I'm, whatever. You can, you can pause. Is that...
Run it.
Is she going to use all three minutes?
How, approximately, how long is the present? If it's going to be a half an hour, I want to take a break so that the high school students...
It will not be a half an hour.
All right, then, let's move it along.
Okay.
Thanks.
You have a toggle with an ACMI?
I tried to be short. I didn't even mention things just to be...
All right, they said, "Take a break." We're, we're...
Can we take a two-minute break and so if any kid wants us to sign something?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. We're back in session. We're back in session.
Oh, Lori Hart. Sorry, it was Lori Hart. But she's not here. She has...
Hello? We're back in session. Thank you. No board business took place during the break. Back to the curriculum report on the high school 2017 data.
Good evening. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to present our high school accountability summary for the 2016-2017 school year. Typically, this presentation's done in February to coincide with the release of the high school report card. Unfortunately, we had a series of snow days, so it kind of got pushed forward, it got pushed forward to April. Thank you to Mr. Cassidy, the high school administration, and the instructional team, as well as Kristen Ranher for compiling all of the data and helped us with the analysis. You should have in front of you copies of the presentation and for the audience listening, a copy of the presentation will be put on the Curriculum and Instruction website following this evening's presentation. This evening, we will be presenting data used by the State Education Department to determine the accountability status of our high school for the 2016-2017 school year. The data that we will be reviewing is the data that we report to the State Education Department. It includes results for the regions from June 2013 through June 2017, as well as a data analysis of those results. The data that is actually used to determine the accountability level of our high school is our participation rate and performance in the, in math, in English Language Arts, in math regions, the English Language Arts regions, as well as our graduation rate. As I've reported in previous presentations, the state requires us to have a 95% participation rate on our region's exams in order to maintain our accountability status. Just as a reminder also, you're going to hear me speak a little bit about cohorts. The data that I'm going to be presenting tonight, some of the data is going to be reflected in cohorts of students. For example, the class of 2016 is the 2012 cohort, which is a group of students that start together in ninth grade and begin their high school career together. However, these region's results don't necessarily mean that all of the students in that cohort took the region's exam at the same time. So, later on, you'll hear me speak about the results of our June 2017 regions. However, when I talk about the class of 2017, the students do not take all of the assessments at the same time. For example, I will be presenting on the English regions that the students took in June 2017. However, some students who take AP classes actually take the region's exam in January. However, that cohort of students, 100% of the students did take the region's exam at some point and 99% of those students were able to pass the exam. That's the class of 2017. Last year's results that I presented, we also had 100% of our students take that assessment and we also had a 99% passing rate for the math regions. In English, again, we had for the 2017, last year's cohort, we had 100% of the students take the exam, 99% of them passed the English regions. In 2016, last year's results, we had 100% of the students take the exam and 98% of the students passed. The other statistic that the State Education Department uses to evaluate our high school is our graduation rate. Now, as I've said in past presentations, the graduation rate is actually two years behind in our reporting because we are held accountable for both our four-year graduation rate and our five-year graduation rate. So, it takes them an additional year in order to report. So, we actually have to wait an additional year to get that five-year graduation rate results because students do have the ability to graduate if they don't pass the region's exams in June, for example. They do have the ability to take them in August, January, or the subsequent June and still qualify for graduation.
They can come back, though, up to the age of, what, 21?
Of 21, yes. We...
But only if they don't meet their requirements, right?
Right. For the purpose of, for the purpose of graduation, our accountability is to have students graduate typically within four years, but for reporting purposes, within five years. But we can still, we can still instruct them up till their 21st year.
Do the summer school, if they graduate in summer school, does it go part of this or is it part of the next year?
It's part of, it's part of the subsequent year. Right.
You know, I just want to ask one question.
Sure.
You mentioned the 21. I wondered if you keep a child, their birthdays are later and they are already 21, what's the cutoff there that if they almost make 22?
It's their 21st birthday during the year that they're in attendance. They can turn 21 in September or October. They get to complete the year up until their June.
Okay, fine.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No, graduate when they're 21.
Yeah, but we're talking about if their birthday is...
If their birthday's later, they can be.
No, if their birthday, we'll say, is in June, right?
If they're, if they're...
And then they're all 22.
Yeah, no, if their birthday's in June, they stop, they stop having access to a public education at 21 years old.
If their birthday's in June?
If their birthday's in June.
So, what if I turned...
Once you start the school year...
You can turn 21 during that school year, but...
You can't turn 22 during that.
But you would have had to have started the school year at 21.
At 20. At 20. You can turn 21 during the year and finish out the year of your 21st birthday.
Correct.
Right. So, we end up being, I shouldn't, that's adding time to my...
I still have to think about this because their birthday's in June. Like, I'm a June birthday.
I'll talk to you about that because I actually know what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, the graduation rate ends up being two years behind because there's a four-year and a five-year graduation rate. So, for this year, for the 2016-2017 report card, we actually look at the graduation rate of the class of 2015 and the class of 2016. The four-year graduation rate for the class of 2015 was 94%. And as to be expected, some students who didn't fulfill the requirements in four years kept at it. We had an additional 2% of students graduate after five years, so the graduation rate increased to 96%. The class of 2016's four-year graduation rate was 95%. Similarly, we anticipate that when the five-year graduation rates are released, that there will be another increase, that there are a population of kids that do continue at it, that that graduation rate will increase. So, the next series of slides are our state region's results. And again, I want to remind the board that these represent snapshots in time of what the results were in June. It's not necessarily how a cohort of students performed on an exam, it's how students performed on a specific exam. So, the first slide shows our results for the Algebra I Common Core, the Geometry Common Core, and the Algebra II Common Core. The Algebra I Common Core has been around the longest. We've administered that exam for four years. The Geometry Common Core exam has been in existence for three years and the Algebra II Common Core exam has been administered by Monroe Berry for two years. So, that's the reason why you see different amounts of scores being reported. Just to give you some context in terms of the number of students who took these exams, we had 504 students take the June Algebra I Regents. And again, just a reminder, these are the high school results. We also have approximately 100 students who take the assessment, the Algebra Regents exam, as eighth graders in the middle school. Those scores are not reflected in these results. These are just the students in the high school who took the algebra exam. 504 high school students took the Algebra I exam. 408 students took the Geometry Common Core exam. And 346 students took the Algebra II Common Core exam.
So, Eric, here, based on your explanation, in your opinion, the test results show that for Algebra I, what you said was the same. Is it the tests are getting harder or is it that we were better, we were better preparing the students for the test that they were taking?
The assessment varies year to year. The population of kids varies year to year. So, there's a sort of...
But there's a consistency in your data.
What do you, what do you mean?
The one, the one that, the one that you've had the same...
The cohort of kids you're talking about?
The test in Algebra I.
Right.
Your test tend to improve.
Tend to improve, right.
The other ones, they tend not to.
Right.
So, those are new tests, you were saying, correct?
Those are, they developed the Common Core Regents exam in algebra first and then the next year, they rolled out the Common Core Regents exam and then the third, the Common Core Geometry exam. And then after three years, beginning in 2016, was the Algebra II Common Core exam.
So, do you think the test was harder for them to understand?
It was, it was aligned to two different sets of curricula. Previously, you know, it kind of coincided with the rollout of, you know, the Common Core that everybody was speaking about.
Yeah.
They gave, and when I get to the social studies slide, you're going to see a similar phenomenon happen down the road because there's going to be an update in the Global Studies exam as well. Right now, it's the traditional Global Studies exam that they're administering. Soon, there's going to be a transition to a new Global Studies Geography assessment. So, there's going to be a similar phase in years down the road.
Isn't there, isn't there a transitional exam being given this year?
There is. We're not offering, all of our students are going to be taking the Global Studies exam. The district has the option to choose that. The State Department gave districts the flexibility of choosing when they're going to administer the exam to make sure that you have the opportunity because the Common Core was sort of rolled out unilaterally across all grade levels and was not grandfathered in. They're now going back to having sort of a multi-year phase in of it, including a transition exam and giving the districts the opportunity to make the choice of when they're going to administer that exam so that you can make sure that your curriculum is aligned to it.
Okay.
And again, I think, Don, similar to what you were, Mr. Beal, was similar to what you were saying, when you look at 93, 86, and 91%, the reason why, when I go back to the math slide, that we have 99% of our students passing is because that includes the students who took the Regents exams in eighth grade. Where these results are only the high school, but when you look at it as a cohort, the entire group of kids that are moving forward in that cohort at some point take the algebra exam and at some point, 99% of the kids take the exam.
I was just trying to understand, you know, make some sense of your numbers.
Okay.
You know, to say, something changed.
Right.
Right? It dropped. So, was it a harder test? Was it a different test that we didn't have a chance to train the students on?
Are you talking about like this particular year?
From 91 to 86, 99 to 90.
In Algebra II he's talking.
Yeah, Algebra II and geometry.
Right.
The Common Core wasn't until 2013.
Correct. And I could tell you that that fluctuation in last year, we had about 25% less students take the exam because there was also, there was also a transition of students taking the old exam versus students taking the new exam. In June of 2016, we had 251 kids take the test. And in June 2017, we had 346 students take the test. So, we had 100 additional kids take the Common Core Regents in 2017 than we did in 2016.
Got it. So, really, the takeaway is the slide's meaningless, pretty much?
There you go.
You know, I would be, I would be interested to know.
Continue.
I would be interested to know because how, you know, they rolled out this, you know, really insane, right?
Right.
So, then you have children who are in certain classes that are in 1511 classes who have some, maybe some learning disabilities and they're taught one way. And then here they went in, you know, whatever grade they were in, sixth grade when it rolled out and seventh grade they were taking, or eighth grade they were taking the Regents. They had, I wonder how many of those students populate this dip?
Many of the...
Because they had to read word.
Many of those kids are in the high school now as we speak. The students that you're speaking about who were sort of caught in the middle of that transition are currently in high school. Yes.
I know.
Yes. Oh.
But, you know, a student that has disabilities, of course, are already having a difficult time learning.
Right.
So, then they rolled out this, not even thinking to roll it out in kindergarten, which would help, you know, the whole, you know, order of students.
Correct.
So, do we know if those students that are in those classes that have, you know, small classes need more of a breakdown?
How has that impacted them?
How has that impacted?
I can get that data for you. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay. The Common Core English exam, which is typically administered to students in their junior year, the first assessment was given last year, June 2016. The second version of that was given in June 2017. Again, to put it in context, we had in June 2017, we had 574 students take the Common Core ELA exam. And just, just as a quick sort of point to make, the math assessments, the Common Core math assessments, as well as the Common Core ELA assessments are not graded in the traditional way that we were graded as a score out of 165 being passing. The math assessments and the English, the math Common Core assessments and the English Common Core assessments are graded on a scale of one to five and three, four, or five being passing. The next results that I speak about are the traditional grading score out of 100 with the 65 being passing. But these, when you, when I say percent passing, that's the percentage of students that get a three, a four, or a five on the assessment. I made mention to the Global History exam. The Global History and the U.S. History and Government exam have been in place for quite a number of years. There is a calendar being put out to phase in the new Global History exam. We are part of a multi-year phase in of making adjustments in the curriculum to move towards that exam. But again, as you can see, we've seen very strong results in those assessments. Finally, our sciences. We offer Regents exams in Earth Science, Living Environment, Chemistry, and Physics. One of the things that I pointed out in past years was you have, particularly in Chemistry and Physics, we've seen an increase in the number of students who've taken those exams upwards of, in Physics in particular, upwards of about 20% because students have found that on college applications, it looks more favorable to have taken a Regents-level physics course rather than some of the electives that potentially may be offered that aren't for college credit. So, to, that phenomenon started taking place 2014, 2015. So, when you saw the passing rate of the physics exam go from 90% down to 77%, we saw an increase in the number of students taking the exam while even though they may not have performed well, it still looked more favorable, it looked favorable on the college application. But over time, still having those high number of kids taking the exams, we have seen an increase in our passing rate, which is notable. All of the data was taken from the data website on State Ed.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
All this is well and good, but it's just comparing each other to each other in the school district. Is the other districts in the area, are we all in the same line? Does everybody have the same kind of fluctuation? Are we, are our students performing better than that or...
I can provide, I can provide you those statistics. I can tell you that we perform very well. Not only do we perform very well, when you are talking about 500 to 600 students in one high school taking an exam and getting the rates that we get, it's notable. So, but I'm happy to give you concrete examples of that. I'm happy to come back.
Can we, can I just say one thing? There is a really good website that I would encourage people to go on. It's data.nyced.gov. I will post it on our website because you can go on that website and you can type in any school anywhere in the state and you will get this data. The data that Dr. Hassler is providing you is from this website that we have access The data that Dr. Hasler is providing you is from this website that we have access to. And I would encourage parents to go and take a look so that you can see for yourself. You can type in, if you wanted to look at, compare us to Warwick, or compare us to Cornwall. But that information is out there. And again, it's on the data.nysd.gov. It's a very, very comprehensive website.
Yeah, it tells you the dropout rates and all that other stuff, too.
Correct. And also, I mentioned in February that the State Department does a big press release about the accountability reports coming out, graduation rates coming out. They also publish a very large document, which is like 1,000 or 1,500 pages. It's a PDF of the proficiency rates of every school by county in the state. So the Data website that Mrs. Rodriguez is speaking about, you have to hand-type in Monroe Woodbury, Warwick, Newburgh, Middletown, and so on. If you go to that report, again, it's over 1,000 pages with a lot of data that's packed in there, but it will aggregate it by county and by school district to give you that information.
Any other questions for Eric?
In the past, though, didn't you show a graph of other counties?
The graph is with the 3 through 8 testing that we do.
That one, okay.
Yep. Because those results are by grade level. We show third, fourth, fifth grade proficiency, ELA in math, by county, by the state results. Yep.
At what point will we release the Regents schedule for June?
It's out. Well...
I know it's out from the state, but are Monroe Woodbury one?
Who?
I got to learn that.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric.
No problem.
And Mr. Casti, I wish you wouldn't monopolize the conversation. First reading, motion to approve the first reading of the Policy 1120 and the Regulation for Sexual Harassment.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions to amplify what Stacy presented? If there be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Personnel?
Good evening.
Matthew?
Good evening. I respectfully request the approval of the items found under Personnel.
Do we have a motion?
First.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and Financial, Patrick?
John, I also respectfully request the approval of the items under Business and Financial. There's three items. There's a acceptance of a donation, $1,000 to the middle school. Let's see, from the New York State Tobacco Survey for field trips. There is a contract with the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Commission for the use of our buses. We do this every year. It's a renewal of an agreement that's already in place. And there are two resolutions for our participation with the OU Bosse Transportation Cooperative and a new cooperative, purchasing cooperative we're going to join called Ed Data. It's actually listed as NY Island Cooperative there, but it's Educational Data, and it's going to help us in the business office to streamline the procurement process.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recommend, recommendations to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Special Preschool Education. Motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office?
Sorry I was late. I had somewhere to be. I don't have anything really to say. I hope the warm weather stays. It's supposed to be really nice this weekend, so get out and enjoy it, maybe while it lasts for two days.
Okay, Don.
Enjoy your evening.
Don.
Thanks for all the presenters. I would just like to point out that Mr. Hasler and the rest of our teachers do have an impact on Patrick's ability to fund us because our graduation rates are so high that we don't get the extra money that a lot of the other schools in the region do. So it's in direct conflict with our ability to get extra money because we do so well and we have such good teachers, so.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I'd really like to thank all our presenters tonight and wish everyone a very nice evening.
Sanjita?
I just want to say that I'm grateful that you all were able to hear what I had to say tonight. I really do appreciate it, and I don't say it enough, but I do appreciate this entire opportunity. And I hope that everybody has a good night.
Thank you. Donna Vitucci?
Thank you to the Monroe Woodbury family for having me, and have a good night.
Thank you. Vargov?
So yesterday and today, we administered the ELA third-grade exam. The first exam for, that was a computer-based testing. And yesterday being the first day was phenomenal, very minimum glitches, and the test was completed almost an hour and a half. This, today, was a different story. Today was the first day that a lot of school districts jumped on it. About 300 school districts in the state started testing it this morning. And obviously, there were some issues with the Questar assessment, who is the third-party vendor for the New York State exams. Within an hour, they were able to resolve the glitches, and then thanks to actually all the building principals, we continued the same schedule, and overall, it worked out very well. So even though with the little glitchy process, we were able to successfully complete all the third-grade ELA exam that was online. This was the first time. And I really want to thank Ms. Randere for leading this, Dr. Hasler, all the two, five building principals. And today was really a fun day to adjust the schedule and kind of come up with the last-minute adjustment, assistant principals, teachers actually, and also support staff. So overall, it worked out very well.
Thank you, Eric.
Just, again, congratulations to our Odyssey, the mine teams. I learned my lesson after trash-talking the Harlem Wizards at last week's Board of Education meeting. They didn't hold back, but it was a fun event. They, you know, they made some money for the Interact Club, so, you know, that's fantastic. Speaking of Interact, Mrs. Rodriguez and I had an opportunity to visit Valley View Nursing Home on Saturday.
I was going to talk about that.
Okay. And she will speak more about that. And congratulations to our languages other than English, National Honor Society inductees today. I was at the ceremony, and it was great. Have a good night.
Patrick?
No report.
Matt?
I'm going to side with Patrick. Have a wonderful night.
Boy.
Lorraine?
I do have something to say. I would like to just say that, you know, listening to the comments from interesting, interested citizens, that I can relate, I can identify, I am a parent. And I just want to say that when I ran on this board, my primary purpose was to help with bullying, drugs, and to keep, you know, an eye on, you know, where the money is. And I wasn't on this board for about a year that I presented a whole bunch of questions, real-to-the-point questions about bullying. Hence, I think that's how the climate survey appeared. Because these questions were really very right to, you know, are you bullied, and what is bullying, and blah, blah, blah. So I think that we're trying and we're better than where we were. And the other was, when I was listening to those students last week talk about the drugs, that was another thing. And I spearheaded the Save a Life, which, you know, we've had our fourth one. And we are, if you want to know, we are meeting every, we try monthly, and we are trying to get coalitions in the community. So it would be really a good idea to come. We meet with the police, we meet with ADAC, we meet with PTA, and that's what's going on behind the scenes. So, you know, I am one that is all for the student that's left behind. I personally have a child with disabilities, and I fight for all students, but I can tell you as a parent, as a parent and not as a board member, you know, there were some students that could create a team for Monroe Woodbury, and they were packaged, they were gift-wrapped, and have not been received. So the bullying that I look at are the ones that are not included in everything that they have an opportunity and deserve. So I just wanted to put that out there because I don't say much about much. I do what I do. I don't have to say what I do, but I wanted to just make it clear that I am one for bullying. I'm not for bullying, but I am one to fight against bullying. I will advocate for all children, and the drugs have always been something. I was a drug counselor. It is very near and dear to my heart, and so I fight for, you know, for those kids that suffer. So thank you. Have a good night.
Lorraine, is there a website that they can go to?
For?
For what you mentioned of...
The Save a Life.
The Save a Life.
Or the other organization that you're with.
How do they get information so that they can meet?
We are partying up with Father Tom at Sacred Heart. He comes. Mr. Casti sends out, you know, when we meet, and when those meetings are taking place outside in the community. Do you want to say a little something about that?
I would love to.
Thank you.
It's a three-seat committee that we created.
That's it, three-seat.
It does have, as Lorraine stated today, we have the local police, we have members of the National Guard who are part of their protest work on the committee as well, plus Father Thomas and many parents and students that are there. We did set out a few weeks ago in the photo news a schedule of where our meetings are, but we can easily, it's not on our website, and it should be, so we can definitely come on our website.
Good. Good.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy?
I want to say thank you to the presenters. I want to also thank the Music Booster Committee for inviting me the other evening to take part in the scholarship for the Music Boosters. It really was a great experience to see some of our young children get up in front of adults and be able to present themselves and speak on their own behalf. It was really pretty great. And I'd also like to give a plug for the Unified Sports Rally that is taking place on Thursday night at 6:30 at the high school. Please attend. It will be a great event.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony?
I also had the opportunity to attend the Music Boosters Scholarship Event last night. It was truly extraordinary. Stacy's right to see these young kids and what they accomplish and how they present themselves, it's really eye-opening. And I'd also like to add that any prior comments I had regarding the school safety officers was completely hypothetical and chess, and will be stricken from the record. Have a good evening, everyone.
Dan?
I'll just reiterate, thank you to the Music Boosters Organization for bringing together the administrators and the community to allow students a chance to interview for a chance at a music scholarship.
Elsie?
I kind of, you almost threw my thunder, but this past Saturday, we, both Dr. Hasler and I, attended Valley View Nursing Home with our Interact students. And it is so wonderful to see our kids volunteer their time and so, with such warm hearts, to work with the seniors. And we played bingo. I was told that I was talking too loud, so I had to move to a corner, but it was really a great experience.
They take the bingo seriously.
They do, they take their, and I, whatever. But our kids were, I just want to talk about how wonderful our kids is.